Mayor, I think that may be a question for me, Pat, and I were just. With rezoning requests are not something determined by the government. And rezoning requests, why are we having all these rezoning requests? The, the government is not in, in a capitalist democratic society does not get to choose. When people are allowed to rezone. Instead rezoning requests come at the choice, at, at, at the choice of the landowner. And the landowner may submit an application and we are statutorily obligated. And to address that through our planning commission and then through the city. And so it is the, the action of the private citizen. That brings a zoning request to the planning commission. And then, and subsequently, of course, to the city council. Regardless of what, whether the planning commission votes for approval or. Votes to, to recommend disapproval by this body. Those matters are at the control of private citizen in this, in this country, and particularly this state. Not the governing body.
So, and in carrying on with that, to deny any type of. Public hearing and all is classified as a taking. So, and in the comp plan and the review of the comp plan. And the review of the comp plan. It's already been discussed, well, let me address what's in the comp plan now. It's mixed use is what it shows. And that can end, if you read on into and get into what is classified as mixed use residential. Most of our areas of residential that show mixed use of anything. Also show neighborhood type commercial along with that and all. It is not far to say that we've already started reviewing different areas. But as we know already that one hundred ninety ninth street is considered a connector link for all the highways. And we look at that as with probably even just a little deeper. Of the properties right there, commercial type uses that support residents. You know, so, yes, we are working on the comp plan. And but as Mr. Dunley said and all. We can't just say we're just sitting on everything because that's a taking. So that's why we look at it and take a good look at it. Now, with that all being said also is that. The preliminary plat when approved. They can't, no preliminary plat can just go in and change streets and things like that without going through the entire process again. Because that's why we review preliminary plats. And then at a final plat, the determination is made is whether it meets the requirements. Or the preliminary plat that's been laid out. An example would be at Brookwood Farms, they decided to cul-de-sac an ending of a street there. Which was good sense due to the water drainage and all. But we had to go back through the preliminary plat procedures. Because that was too much of a change and affected the property to the south. Because that landowner to the south even came to it, I called Kraus. And said, no, you can't take that entrance away, it's gonna affect my property. And we had to end up that we negotiated out with him. And they did put in, make sure that there were two entrances to his property. So, once that preliminary plat is approved. If there's major changes or, or really about any change in streets. Then we go through the process again. So, now what's before us tonight is RR to R four. In this portion here. To be quite honestly, can you change this back so I can show this something, please? On this, as you see the, the way in, okay. And then there is a extension here to go to one hundred ninety ninth street. In good planning principles, we had at one time looked to take this street down through here and come right down through there. And line up with the, one of the entrances into Maple Ridge.
Crestone Street.
Okay, Maple Ridge. In thinking about this area here, and to give you another idea, the, the comp plan. If it's not within the city limits most of the time, which that's why we're really working on the comp plan, it just shows residential. I mean, it does, that's what they used to do. So that's what we at first had thought. And in thinking about this property here. You know, we went back to the design back over beside the church and the existing Webster going through there. So I would say in the future. That somewhere or another, this will be tied in right here to one hundred ninety ninth street in the future.
Mrs. Woodston?
Woodston, yes.
Is that your property also next to your house on the left hand?
It is, yes. Back about, a little bit off track, but about four years ago, we had actually had a plan proposed of taking a street. In through the, I believe it was your parents' ground at that time or something, maybe, or anyway, through that property there. So at this point, it's really the, the best we could do at this timeframe, so.
So then Bina's property is off on the right where Woodland Road is, is that right everywhere?
Straight south.
Okay, straight south. And then it's one hundred ninety ninth on the other side.
Yeah, they turn off of one hundred ninety nine to get to their properties. Real nice, they keep it real mode, really very nice and all right there. Yes, they do do a great job. And we've, and you know, I, I can't really speak but. To timing, but really we see that side of, because it's a very expensive crossing right here. Because this is floodplain. I would say that.
Probably gonna be a bridge.
And I would say that looking at years and years and years before that property is even built. But in saying that, we, the entire. Preliminary plat had to be looked at within reason of what we know is coming with the comp plan also.
I, I think with some of the discussions that we've had in previous rezonings and talking about mixed use. And I, I think mixed use is where we're headed with a lot of our rezonings in the future. One of the things that, that got brought up was when you get to the denser zoning pieces or versions. Like R four, you wanna have them essentially as close to the highway as you can. And I don't know that we could get this any closer to the highway and put direct access to an R four zone. Give it direct access to the highway, which I think is the most ideal setup for that type of zoning. Which is one of the main reasons that I think this is a good spot for it. If I was Mrs. Boydston, I would be doing exactly what, what you're doing and, and speaking out against it. And going back to some of our previous rezoning discussions, I think this one is less impactful. Because there's not as many current homes already around it. There are some, but there's not as many. And if we really wanna value mixed use in what types of homes are offered out there. We need to consider some R four and some, some higher stuff, and I think this is a good spot for it. I don't think we're gonna find many better spots for it than this.
And I definitely sympathize with, with the landowner, but I do also agree this with, that this is a very good location. Because it is close to the highway, similar to Blackhawk Apartments. Where it's right off the highway, it'll be easy access, there's gonna be a quick trip right across the street. It'll just be, you know, a good, a good area overall, have the park right there next to it. So I, that, you know, if it does end up being apartments or retirement home, they'll be able to utilize that park space. And I just think it'll overall be a great location for what we generally consider, you know, an R four to be.
Is there any way they could be more specific, if it could be senior assisted living, which would be kind of a?
I don't think they can in this stage, this is just, you know, this is just the rezoning stage.
Right.
That'd be more of a preliminary plat or final plat.
Final plat and, and site plan.
Yeah.
Is there, could there be any kind of a buffer for their property between the apartments that could be?
We can look at that at the site plan, yes, I mean, you know, this is.
We're a ways from that.
Right, we're at the rezoning, but you are correct. At the site plan and everything has to go through a site plan on any type of R four. And we could look at buffering and all, all kinds of things at that time. Which we would look at, because I, I drive around and see some of the old stuff and. You know, there were no consideration given to neighborhoods about car lights and all. And that's, those are the items that we really would look at is car lights. You know, now we don't let the pack lights on the side of the building, they have to be directionally down as you can see at Blackhawk. And if, if we could take Blackhawk as an example. You know, it worked out great there for that area, so.
If you would like to step up to the microphone and state your name and everything, sure.
Hi Mayor, my name is Tatyanda Mkuagwa two, one two nine seven, two hundred nineteenth string, Spring Hill, Kansas. That he mentioned Blackhawk. Blackhawk apparently is the only apartment complex we have in the city and they are full. I myself and others have personally wanted to leave and go to other places and people that wanna, you know, are reinventing their lives. And Blackhawk is full. And there's another building that's built, built on the highway, on the way to Gardner. And they don't have access for other, for us premillions, they are not letting us who eat, who actually owns it. And I guarantee you by the time it's ready, it will be leased out. So these people that are coming into our city are coming unknowingly. And are, you know, selling to other people and we don't have first dibs on these things. So why are we bringing them here if they are not saving us? And also the other thing that you brought up about the quick trip, there's a tent with fireworks. I'm not sure I'm pretty safe with that, we have fireworks next to a gas station, period. So those are two things that I would like to bring up, that just doesn't rub me right or any other parent. To have fireworks next to a gas station, that's just a no. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, the fireworks stand, they're just selling fireworks there, no, they're not setting fireworks off at the fireworks station. That's just where you can purchase them to set them off.
Just so you know that the state fire marshal regulates all that. And a lot of these things that the, the city has to address, I know I'm getting off course here. But a lot of the things that the city has to address, people have to understand, that's a state statute. And, you know, I, I think that they need you to start going their state representatives on a few of these things, so, on that. Now on the rezoning, any additional questions or comments?
Ms. Johnson, did you have?
I'm sorry, oh.
Thank you, thank you. Susan Johnson, three oh five South Madison Street here in Spring Hill. What is the difference between R three and R four? And if I understood correctly, when it's a planned, you know, if it was RP four. You know, you had mentioned if we could get more specific on what's gonna go there, would it be RP four, would that be preferable? And I'm wondering. When all of these ordinances are regarding properties adjacent to each other. Who chooses the order that they get presented? And how is that chosen and is it important? I kinda feel like it is, just a few questions that I had.
Thank you, and Pat can speak to all those there.
First to adjust the order, we just take them, honestly, this went from north kinda down around the south. There's no particular. North kind of down around the south, it, there's no particular, we don't have any conspiracy on how we present them. And we could present any direction. Uh, but, and that's why we welcome, really, at the public hearing time. All the comments and concerns. Uh, to go ahead and address everything, the difference is the amount of units that you can place in there in the height. On R three to R four, okay? Then also, in an R four situation, the regulations on. The uh, site plan is almost identical as to a planned district. So you can ask for additional landscaping, all kinds of stuff. Uh, radius turning with fire trucks and uh, covered parking to be looked at and things of that nature. Um, also, you know, uh, maybe. In this case, they come in and we also negotiate out that they spend X amount of dollars in the park. Uh, they had joined the park, the utilization of the park. With any type of R four, there's a lot more um, ability to negotiate. Uh, out things. So and RP four really does not help staff. Gain any more um.
There's not as much advantage.
There's not. I mean, we can still, I say staff, also the planning commission and governing body. So, and then um. Let's see, was there one more?
I think that was it.
That was it, okay, so.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twenty. For rezoning application Z dash zero 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 two eight dash two zero two two. For the described property from RR to R four. Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty two da- twenty twenty two dash twenty passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and at this time, I'd really like to say that um. The, we welcome the public at the public hearings as well. And that would be a really, really good opportunity to speak on.
And really, this type of thing we, we have had here with having a lot of audience members speak, that, that thing really is more appropriate in. Public hearing, cause then you can get up there, ask any questions.
That's correct.
We typically don't do that, because we have so many rezonings, rezonings, I'm allowing it tonight, but typically that would be in the public hearing portion.
And, yes, and, and our office is always open for questions as well, so. But thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twenty one rezoning. P Z D zero 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 twenty nine dash twenty twenty two, one hundred ninety third street to one hundred ninety seventh street. And Webster Street to Woodland Street, RR to RP one. And Mr. Burton, you have this one also, Mr. Popularity.
Yes, boy, thank you, um. As we just, as the mayor just talked about, this is a twenty six point three eight acres. Uh, from an RR to an RP one. And the uh, planning commission looked at it, uh, went through the public hearing on it. And uh. Deemed that that area, uh, do you want to see the area, I'm sorry, do you, let me pull that up.
Yeah, go ahead, just so in case anybody.
Yeah, I should have, I should have had that ready. So as you can see, this is the farthest south piece. Before the proposed park of this. This is the park. And uh, changing from RR to RP one. Uh, for some, uh, a little greater density due to the side yard setbacks. And of course, we will look at all that at the uh, preliminary and final plat. Size of lots uh, will really be brought up at the preliminary, but the final plat is when we really, really study those. Uh, this uh, as it's a, it's a single family zoning. Planning commission looked at it, held the public hearing, uh, I don't believe there was any comments on this, and then approved it. So I would welcome any questions on it.
I think this kind of development near the highway is perfect spot for the three different types of rezoning and the one we just passed with the apartment.
Thank you.
Because they have easy access to get off.
Yes, and where we are really, with the connection of one hundred ninety ninth. And one hundred ninety first, that also provides access to two different ways onto the highway. And, and we are. Actively and aggressively working on trying, and I don't want anybody to take this wrong. Trying to get a signalization at one hundred ninety first street.
Yes, and we are working really hard on that.
We are, uh, I just don't want to say, oh yeah, and then somebody says, well, why isn't it in tomorrow? Um, but we, we really, uh, it's a concerted effort actually by. All the property owners that own property in that area as well as property that comes to that area.
And this is, for clarification, it's one hundred ninety first at one sixty nine.
Yes, I'm sorry, one hundred ninety first and one sixty nine signalization.
It's with, and with, with the school that, Dayton Creek's Elementary School there, and then the new middle school going, you know, further to the east. It's a very, very busy intersection already, and so it's definitely. Definitely needed.
Yes, and this development and then Country Meadows has now all but sold out. Um, working with several uh, businesses that are getting ready to submit site plans and all. We have a few site plans already submitted, we had a groundbreaking on one of them here a few days ago.
Yeah, Moody's Hardware.
So, yes, hardware, so, um, it, it'll be a very busy intersection and. We also looked at it and said, okay, we do have Moody's Hardware coming in. Uh, there's some vets, a veterinarian, we have the event center. What I'm getting at is, there are a lot of areas, QuickTrip, that will serve this residential area as well. We're not placing it out there and then everyone has to drive three miles to get to any type of services, so.
And hopefully this will draw in even more commercial and stuff that we all want, restaurants, different things like that.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, one thing, it is already sewered as well, I mean, we have a main trunk running in there with a sewer lift station. The, the community's been paying on for fifteen years.
And not using.
And not using, that's correct.
And the road going through is gonna be a. Grant that was associated with that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, uh, this is right here. Webster and the base grant that we received, two point seven million dollars is funding a good portion of it.
As I've stated before, that was, we were blessed to get that grant, cause that'll, I believe it was only thirty five given out in the entire state. And so we were able to, and we had some people working hard on it and some people even outside the city working hard on it.
That's correct, yeah, yeah, the developer worked real hard in behalf of the city.
Yeah, and so we were, we were blessed, and that's the biggest grant that the city's ever received, so.
So I think my comment is just that, you know, um, we're going through these, I know there's questions um, about why and how. I watched the planning commission um, discuss this, these issues as well. To me, this all makes sense, this is just all necessary infrastructure. Being paid by the right people, maybe if you will, um, uh, done the right way, so I think it all makes sense. I just think it's a very sensible development for our community and an area that needs it, right, um, right off the highway. Um, so I'm making a comment now, kind of as an umbrella over everything, cause I've been quiet all along, but that, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Why I'm voting the way I'm voting.
So this base grant is different than Cars or Mark.
That's correct, yes.
I think also everybody should be aware of some things the past administration did. Because we were talking about where things are necessary for infrastructure and where we need to put a halt at something. And that is one hundred and ninety ninth street becoming a truck intermodal route from one sixty nine to sixty nine highway. That means that would go through all the neighborhoods by Brookwood.
Can I address?
Around the roundabout.
Okay, go ahead.
So we need to run from that, uh, Spring Hill, we don't want that cutting through where our high school is. Semi trucks, I know that's a huge roundabout. And so what if the past administration did it, we can do something about it.
Right, so um, if, I would, I would really, I'll address, I would love to address it if we could complete the.
Get out of the zoning, talk about that.
And I, I, I'm not, I will address it right after that if the mayor so chooses me to.
Yep, yeah, and, and I had already talked, we were already gonna address it anyways. Any other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion. Number nine.
Yep, twenty, twenty nine.
Go ahead. Move to adopt ordinance number two zero two two dash two one. For rezoning application P Z D dash zero 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 two nine dash two zero two two. For the described property from RR to RP one.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty one passes five zero zero.
So Mayor, um, I'm not sure if you want me to address that now.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it now, before we move on to the next thing.
So. That is correct, um, that is called a connector link. It has been with the state and the county, and as, as you probably are aware, the county is working on. Right now and has been for ten years, uh, making. One hundred ninety ninth safe for truck travel. Um, we, past administration and governing body did participate in it. And is getting ready to start a portion of it right now, soon. Under the Cars Project from one sixty nine to Veterans Lane, so one sixty nine going west. Uh, one hundred, one sixty nine highway or K seven on one hundred ninety ninth, so that is to start any day. The other portion of it, uh, the county is doing in conjunction with. A, a little bit of uh, Edgerton and Gardner. From Veterans Lane to basically I thirty five. Or Garden Road would be a, a more correct, cause they've already kind of done the rest of it with the bridge expansion. You are correct, it is and has been classified as a uh, connecting link for a long, long time. Uh, past administration, e- even before the other administrators and all. It was already in play, and it was in conjunction also with the K seven corridor study that. Happened two thousand four or five, somewhere in that area. But yes, you are correct that, um, that is classified as a interconnection between highway and highway.
That doesn't seem very smart to have that by highs, by a high school and all the subdivisions coming out, to have semis coming through there. When you've got two hundred and twenty third street that already has an overpass, that's a truck route also.
And it will be also, yes.
You also have the interstate, we should keep the semis on the interstate of I thirty five and not bring them through the city. And not, the city was not all developed like it is now. And sometimes there hasn't been very open things going on with the county.
It could be.
Johnson County Commissioners, probably, and that has not been very open.
Well.
To all the commissioners.
And, and what I would like to say is that. In the past planning, that the city and in knowledge of some. Things that like this connector link and all. But yet still promoted placement of different types of development. Where a lot of times, uh, you know, we get the public, comes in and. Says to me just not very long ago, a few years ago, you know. I don't know why you're gonna allow this development over on the south side of one hundred ninety ninth. When one hundred ninety ninth's never gonna be wide, it's never gonna be the. Look, I, I try and do what's best for the community, and in knowing that this was already approved years ago. Hundred ninety ninth is gonna be a wide used street. Um, and along with two hundred and seventh, along with two hundred and twenty third street. Um, a lot of that, I mean, obviously, you know, it was well before myself and. And most all administration, it happened twenty years ago now, almost, it was decided. And that's what happens, it just keeps building and, so twenty years ago. I'm gonna say, maybe the city didn't have enough foresight. To say, wait a minute, hold on, you know, let's look at something different. Um, I mean, if you just take a look at where our glass plant is placed, and at that time, that was in the contrary. And where the foresight is now, hopefully, and I, I think that everyone's doing a, a good job. You know, we're looking out around and um, trying not to let that happen, ma'am.
We're trying to look out to make it not happen by the high school and by all the subdivisions, because that was twenty years ago. But that was planned out and that high school was land, land was taken by eminent domain from Mr. Inglewood. Which probably wasn't that many years ago, and once a high school, I can think of no other high school anywhere in Johnson County. That has a truck route right next to the high.
One hundred and seventy fifth is in Blue Valley, High School is, and sits also by the, and Shawnee Mission, you're exactly right. Now, I'm not defending that truck route, okay, but I, I just. That's why we're trying to work so hard on future planning, some people look and say, you know, like, talking about the. Busiris sewer line and all now, you know, um, you know, we're trying to look for planning on that. And in, in the same time, know that that's gonna be a truck route, which I think would be a, a. As long as we plan for it now, it would work just fine. And, but in saying that, you know. If, if you, if we want to discuss it and see some measures that you would like. Staff to go and try and work with it, you know, we're, we will, we're very willing to do that. So, we're not trying, believe me, I don't hide anything from anybody. Sometimes I get in trouble for saying too much, so.
I think the difference with one seventy fifth is there's a lot of shoulder along there, and there's not neighborhood after neighborhood. With windy roads already established, it's a pretty straight thoroughfare till you get to the roundabout.
Right.
And personally, I've never seen any semis when I've driven down there going by Blue Valley. But I sure could see a lot of them coming down one ninety ninth, and it's just not compatible to that area now with how it's developed up. You know, with how it was twenty years ago when they planned it, I just think it's, nothing's done on it yet, it's been talked about, but there's no. There's nothing done with the roads yet, and it was not very transparent in the Johnson County Commissioners.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm.
Cause I've spoken to some of them, and they weren't, they were left out at the meeting.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not aware of that, but I do, like I said, I'll, if you get with the mayor and if you give direction to us. Um, we do work for the governing body.
Mr. Peel, would you like to step up and ask a question real quick?
Peterman?
You need a water?
Is that what you're asking?
Oh my God, you're killing me.
Nineteen four thirty one West two hundred street. Like I said, a couple other meetings ago, I've been coming here for five, six years. Three or four years ago, Johnson County came to this meeting and brought print handouts where they was from one hundred and, one sixty nine west. And part of that, we paid three hundred thousand dollars for the portion on one hundred and ninety ninth that was in Spring Hill city limits. So they've been planning on this now. They don't have, according to their print handout that I took, and I still got it, but I didn't have it in my stuff today. From, I'm trying to think, it's not Black Bob, the one this way, Renner?
Renner, I think.
From Renner to one sixty nine, they don't work on that until twenty twenty eight to twenty thirty, correct?
I think it's actually twenty sixth.
And it's moved up? Yeah, yeah. But the only place that they don't, that, that they're not doing anything is from, by the high school. They, 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 they think that we're gonna do that.
That, that is correct, it, under our Cars project.
Okay, so there, there's one port, if you can vote no on, at that point, because that, that one little section could maybe hold it out. I just, like you say, been coming forever, so I got, I got memory to remember all that stuff and I got paperwork to cover it too, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no one's doubting you, Mr. Peterman, so. And I do wanna maybe make a, a small correction is, um, I believe it's more in the range of a half a million that we're paying. I believe it's in the range of a half a million that we're paying for that, so I'll get the exact numbers to you. Unfortunately, uh, Lou Anne isn't here tonight with our books, but I just wanted to let you know that it could be more than three hundred thousand, so.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Um, next item is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twenty two, ordinance amending chapter two, article eight of Spring Hill Municipal Code, keeping of chickens in city limits, and Mrs. Garrity, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'll.
Unless Miss, unless Mr. Burton wants to take it.
Well, I, no, I didn't want to, but I'll, I'll do that, so Mrs. Garrity can continue with notes and all. As you know, on the May twenty sixth meeting, council adopted an ordinance allowing, uh, residents to keep chickens, single family and two family residence proper, residential properties. It doesn't agree responsibilities, oh, the responsibilities at that time were, uh, shown to be, uh, the city clerk's office and, you know, it should be in community development and that's what we had talked about. It being in, under community development, so that was a little mis, uh, it was miswritten in the ordinance and we'd, we wanna make sure that that's correct. And then the, um, the other, I believe that's the only one on this one, was the amount of chickens?
Um, no, the amount.
I think we just said.
It's okay.
Okay, alright.
So it was basically just assigned to the wrong apartment.
That's correct.
You did, and then we're also, um, making sure that they understand that there's a, that, the initial inspection. And that there will be an inspection at the renewal as well.
Yes, so we felt like that, um, and, and I believe that, um, Mrs. Garrity is correct, that we should have more than just the initial inspection, so we're inspecting it initially and at renewal. And then obviously at any complaint driven. So that's, I apologize, I just, uh, didn't really expect Glenda to come up and present it on this one, so.
Any other questions on that one? It's relatively straightforward, but.
No.
Free if anybody has any. All right, since it's an ordinance, um, I entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Uh, I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty two dash two two, amending chapter two, article eight of the Spring Hill Municipal Code regarding the keeping of chickens within the city limits. Second.
Got a motion in second, is there any further discussion? If not.
I was gonna make one quick comment, I was just gonna say, so I did, I was.
I knew you would have a comment on this. Alright, go ahead.
I, uh, I know I was, uh, the only one that voted against it and I just wanted to be clear that even though I don't support it and I'm, I'm not in favor of it, if it has to exist within our community, I will be voting in favor of the way this is written, so I just wanted to clarify my vote.
All good.
Did we have a second on that?
I think we.
Alright, motion in second, for discussion, if not, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Young is absent, so sorry. And I've been instructed that the mayor should, uh, report that the ordinance has passed because you do have veto power on this, so I do have a vote.
Did you get Mrs. North?
Yes.
Did I miss that? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
So it was four zero zero, but.
Alright, motion carries four zero zero and it passes. Alright, next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twenty three, ordinance amending chapter, let's see, ten fifteen of the Spring Hill Municipal Code and adopting new provisions and a new article two B, non-city initiating towing of vehicles from private property within city limits of Spring Hill, Kansas, relating to and establishing towing regulations for towing vehicles from private property by landowners or leases in a matter consistent with Kansas law as set forth in chapter fifteen, article two B of the Spring Hill Municipal Code, and Chief Fenton, you have the floor.
Thank you. If you recall, uh, in April, the end of April, I came out and we talked about rotational toes um, and having to develop an ordinance that kind of gives some parameters. In the course of doing that, we also discovered that, um, uh, we don't have any ordinances that address uh, landowners of private property which are open to the public and that have some parking limitations on parking or particular parking spaces, giving them the opportunity and authorization to tow motor vehicles. Um, and so what we have, have here under the article two B is, the intent is to allow landowners or the authorization, um, to tow vehicles from the property and to have proper notification for, um, vehicle owners that that could occur. The alternatives or the, the options here are to approve the ordinance as amended or to direct the city staff for any additional inform, uh, information that you may need. And I do believe there is one, uh, resident who would like to speak on this particular one, Mr. Merritt.
Okay. Was there a resident, Mr. Merritt, that would like to speak on this one? And if so, if you could step up to the microphone, just state your name and address.
Yes, Grant Merritt, two three five eight five, West two hundred and seventh street, Spring Hill, Kansas. Yeah, I read through the ordinance, I think it's got a lot of good stuff in it. There is six mentions of the property owner has to provide adequate authorization before removal of a vehicle. And, um, I just, I'm, this is a, this is a subject that is difficult. Whenever there's a vehicle towed or vehicle on our property that's, you know, causing a problem, one of the things that would help us immensely, and I don't know if it can be put in the ordinance, is that if somebody is gonna leave their vehicle in there and obviously it's broke down or, um, has a problem, if they would leave their name and, or contact information, we'd be able to get ahold of them and find out, you know, how long it's gonna be there. Years ago, before the privacy laws, you could call the, you know, law enforcement and they wouldn't tell you anything, but they would call the property owner or the vehicle owner and let them know. Or at least, you know, try and get us information, well, they can't do that anymore. So, um, we'll leave a sticker on there and leave it on there for a couple days and it's still there. And then, you know, when it is finally towed, they're not happy. But some of the things that have happened is, you know, we had a tow truck or a loaded asphalt truck breakdown. And they pulled into the parking lot, they had a flat tire. They called Cross Midwest, Cross Midwest comes out, you know, um, tries to jack up the truck, it's so heavy it, the jack went right through the asphalt parking lot. Just the other day, we had a vehicle broke down. His engine blew up, oil all over the place, people trapping, tracking through the oil and going into, uh, businesses that have carpet and tile and stuff and tracking the oil, people would track the oil in. So it's, it, I, I like the ordinance, um, you know, there's a lot of requirements of the property owner, you have to put, uh, up signage, which is fine. But I would really like to see or encourage, you know, people, if they're gonna leave their vehicles there, to at least let us know. You know, give us your name and number so that we know how long it's gonna be there, what's going on.
Are you, are you seeing that this is more problematic, like with people that are traveling through or with like residents?
It's. It's, it's both, you know, we have people that carpool and I'm, I'm all for the carpooling. Uh, the trouble with the carpooling is, you know, we have a snow event and you got car parked here, car parked here, car parked there. And we're trying to be safe and get the parking lot cleaned up in the middle of the night, all these people come in and start parking. Those people have been pretty respective, um, some of them haven't, some of them dump out their ashtrays, they dump out their Burger King. And it's, you know, it's all part of it, we can deal with that, but, um, just reading through here and seeing, you know, property owner who owns the land has to give, you know, calling the police department and letting them know is no problem, I'm hoping that that's because they might field a phone call from the, the vehicle owner and be able, and, you know, and be able to tell them, yeah, I got towed to Locust tow and that's where your vehicle is. But anyway, it's just, um, that's the one thing that, you know, really stands out to me is that if somebody is gonna leave their vehicle there for days and days, you know? And when it says adequate authorization, does that mean that, you know, we call the police department and they say, oh, well, you know, we'd really like you to leave it there longer? I don't really know what that means. We've even had, um, uh, it probably wasn't the police department locally, but we've had vehicles that have gotten towed there and dropped off, we've had semis dropped off. And you ask them and they're like, well, you know, the, the law enforcement said it can't be left on the side of the highway. So they encouraged us to drop it off here in this parking lot. Anyway, I, I think it's a good ordinance, you know, there's no problem complying with it, it's just, I really don't know what adequate authorization means. And, um, if we notified the city or the police department that what the circumstance is, does that mean that we get to tow it or do they, are they gonna say you can't tow it? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And chief, if you do have any answers to speak to some of those?
I may defer to.
Mr. Dunley, do you have any comments?
I do, um, adequate authorization is what is provided in the ordinance. And so when it says the landowner shall do this, this and this, that is required by state statute. State statute provides municipalities with the ability to adopt an ordinance authorizing private property toes. And in order to do so, there are several requirements placed upon landowner. Signage, authorization, contacting the, all of those make adequate authorization. A lack of signage, failure to notify, that's not adequate no, notification. So the requirements placed upon the private property landowners in our ordinance are provided direct, that, that's straight out of state statute from what allows us to adopt the ordinance in the first place. One, second point, we're, there's another ordinance that is coming before the city council tonight regarding a rotational tow ordinance and it addresses, it also amends the city's current tow regulations. And that includes that on private property, if a vehicle is abandoned for forty eight hours or more, then law enforcement may instruct that to be tow, may instruct a tow company to tow the vehicle rather than the landowner. There's an exception, of course, for, you know, parking in somebody's front yard in a residential, it, obviously, in, in an obvious inappropriate residential spot. So that allows law enforcement to tow it, so if there's a vehicle that has been abandoned there, then the landowner can notify the police department as long as the police department has noticed that, and has proof of forty eight hours, then police department can do it and that's addressed in the other ordinance. So yes, each one of the steps that are in there is what is adequate notice.
And the PD could do that at the request of the property owner also?
The PD could do what?
So the ordinance you're talking about allows the police department, after forty eight hours of not moving, to be able to tow a vehicle?
If it is indeed abandoned.
If it is indeed abandoned.
And, and there's forty eight hours, the police department could, and that is in the next ordinance.
What I'm asking is, if the property owner requested to the PD to do that, that is still within the boundaries of what's okay?
What the, the property owner needs to do is notify the police department that there's an, an abandoned vehicle
Right.
on their property and that'll start that forty eight clock, hour clock ticking.
Gets it rolling, right?
Yes.
And then in the, the current ordinance, we're talking about giving the property owner authority to tow after giving appropriate notice with through signage and other things?
That is correct.
Okay.
And all of those property owner obligations are manifestations of state law requirements.
Right, and I'm, I'm, my understanding is that, so if a vehicle gets dumped in a parking lot, a private parking lot with no notification or information left about it, nothing given to the owner, then they would, that would, as long as they have the signage appropriating that authority, then they would have the authority to tow that.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, that's, that's how I was understanding it.
Subject to the whatever, they have the proper signage and so on.
Exactly.
And that's still under the forty eight hours, correct?
That would be less than forty hours, they have signage.
So that would be two different options, you got that option, plus you've got the forty eight hour option through the PD.
Okay.
But that needs to be showed for an abandoned vehicle as opposed to something else.
Right. Gotcha.
Okay.
And with regard to notifying the police department, if a private property owner tow's a vehicle, it is merely so that we can make note in case the owner calls to report their vehicle stolen, we have a way of saying, nope. We've just take, we've just checked the tow log, uh, your vehicle is not stolen, it is at such and such place.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion. Who wants? Nobody?
Eleven.
Let's go, let you guys.
Move to adopt ordinance number two zero two two dash two three, amending chapter, what is it?
That's fifteen.
Article two B of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to non-city initiated towing of vehicles from private property. Second.
Got a motion in second, is there any further discussion? If not, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Four zero zero is the tally.
Uh, ordinance passes four zero zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, ordinance amending chapter fifteen, article two A of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to city initiated tow regulations authorized by the Spring Hill Police Department and all law enforcement officers who are members of the department and adopting additional provisions regarding the use and maintenance of rotational tow lists for the city initiated toes as set forth in chapter fifteen, article two A of the Spring Hill Municipal Code. Chief Henson, you have the floor still.
Okay, so this is to actually address the rotational tow aspect, what would it be, what would require tow companies um, to be able to be on our list, um, with regard to having, um, you know, a fenced-in area, a location that is within the Johnson or Miami County counties for, um, their tow lots, uh, those types of things, and so this ordinance is to really, um, address those provisions and regulations to operate rotational tow lists. We did not have one prior.
And you did give us some, some big detail on this a couple of months ago, and then also I believe you guys said you inspect in each lot as well.
Correct, right, and we got all of their, um, COIs, insurance to, to see where they were at on those, on those items, and so basically this, um, and to answer the earlier question that I think that, uh, Mr. Dunley was saying was that under that first, uh, authority to tow or impound fifteen dash two oh one A dot one oh one, subsection D, where it talks about when a motor vehicle is abandoned, left unattended on a highway, public road, city-owned property or property available by, for use by the public as described in the KSA eight dash eleven oh two C for a period of time in excess of forty-eight consecutive hours, or when any unattended motor vehicle interferes with public streets or highway operations, uh, is where, um, I believe you were referencing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, and so basically the options are to approve the ordinance, um, amending the chapter fifteen, article two B related to city initiated toes and establishing a rotational tow list um, or, um, directing, uh, city staff to, uh, provide additional information.
Any further questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, amending chapter fifteen, article two B of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to city initiated toes and establishing a rot- rotational tow list.
Second?
We've got a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houten?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Tally is four zero zero.
All right, ordinance passes four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R dash twelve, resolution establishing annual maximum permissible tow service fees, services and functions for which the city of Spring Hill, Kansas authorized tow service providers may charge. Chief Henson?
So again, during our, um, review of the tow companies that we had been using, um, we found that there were some differences in fees. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that we kept a consistent, uh, ceiling, you know, a max that they could tow. Um, you know, and, uh, so that there's a, if they are called on, on behalf of the police department through a rotational basis, they will not charge more than a maximum cap. And so we're, uh, we've, uh, kind of drafted a resolution that allows for, um, future changes should the need arise without having to, uh, change the ordinance. This is very similar also to what KHP standards are as well. So we're not above, we're not, you know, super high, we're not super low, we're right with everybody else.
Well, and these fees are the cap.
These are the cap.
I was gonna say, these rates look very, very high, but this is the cap.
This is the cap.
So that most tow companies don't charge these pricings, uh, for some ser- some services.
Yeah, I can't, I, I don't know for certain, but this is what they won't charge more than.
In, in my experience, most of the tow companies that I have worked with, they don't, these are, these are much higher than the fees that I typically see. But again, this is a cap, so that's okay, it's just saying they can't take advantage and go above that, so I just wanna make sure everybody, this is probably not gonna be the normal, uh, they'll usually be much less than this.
And the fee could change based on precisely what service you need, because there's like several different breakdowns of this costs this, this costs this, this costs, this is the max cost for this, all that. So it's not like we're saying it's gonna be two hundred dollars to tow your car no matter what, like it, it's gonna vary with the variables.
Well, the hookup fee won't be greater than a hundred and fifty.
Right, but I mean, like, so if you, you know, let's say it only, one only gets stored one day or one gets stored inside and one gets stored outside, so it's gonna be a variance in the overall total that gets charged.
Right.
Well, and again, we're not charging.
No, the tow companies are.
Yeah, so we're not.
We're just saying, this is the most that you can charge for the specific service.
If you would like to be on our rotational tow list.
If you wanna be a candidate to get asked to do this.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing is, is that any, if, if we, um, are on a call or like a motor assist, for example, or an accident and someone wants to, and their car cannot be moved and it can be towed, we could do one or two things. Like, number one, if they already have like a triple A and they wanna use their own tow company, they certainly can do that. If they wanna select a tow company from our list of rotationals, they can do that if they have a preference. Or if they don't have a preference, or we need to immediately remove a vehicle because the folks who are on a rotational tow usually will respond within twenty or thirty minutes, um, we can, we can just do that. And if they, if we use the rotational tow at our request, not at the request of the, the owner of the vehicle, then they would fall under these max caps.
Gotcha.
This is just creating a resource for us, a useful resource for us to serve the community.
And it doesn't allow for, um, people who may be, uh, other, other tow companies who may be coming in in the middle trying to, uh, gain, uh, customers, if you will, and, um, charging more than what another one would, so.
To be clear, uh, Mayor, Council, um, this started with attempting to address the, the chief's request for rotational tow. The ordinance that you just passed addressed a number of other issues that I discovered within the existing ordinances. And so we, I corrected those with the, um, in talking to the chief so that all of the authority that is necessary for the officers to use for the toes. With regard to the maximum prices, a- a- as Councilmember Peel pointed out, they are indeed maximum prices. And one of the differences between these, these would not necessarily be market competitive pricing for the towing of a vehicle by somebody that would use triple A or even your own ability to find one. However, all of the companies on the rotational tow list are also agreeing to comply with all the other requirements, which means they have to tow abandoned or destroyed vehicles. For which they may have to sell later at auction and may not recover a fee. Um, they also have to provide cleanup services. So some of the costs, some of those rates which may seem high as a maximum rate for a commer- for, say, a market rate, uh, include a lot of things that wouldn't ordinarily be included in an or- in a tow to a, uh, an auto or, uh, to repair or auto body shop.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R dash twelve, establishing maximum permissible tow service fees, services and functions for the city of Spring Hill. Second?
Got a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
It's just a resolution.
Oh, sorry, nope, it's just a resolution, my bad. Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself for item number fourteen.
Okay, we'll send somebody out for you when, when we need you. Wait till he gets out to read that one. All right, next item on the agenda is consider approval of facility use agreement with Spring Hill Recreation Commission. And Mr. Messer, you have the floor.
I wanna start out a, a good evening and apologize, my allergies are kicking my butt, so I'm working at this best I can here. This is for the rec, uh, agreement. There has not been any wholesale changes, there have been a couple modifications. Uh, I think Chuck worked and we, instead of doing it every, every year, every year, we've got a two-year with an option for a third was one of the modifications. The rec commission provides vi- uh, variety of valuable services. We, um, there's a rental fee for it, which is collected, and we provide some of the cleanup and some of, they provide some of the cleanup, it's a shared expense. And, uh, this is pretty much just a, I don't wanna say a routine, but a normal function that we do this uh, on a periodic basis. Uh, it identifies the term, the rent, the space and, the alternatives is to prove this facility usage agreement, uh, deny it or send it back for further research, re- research. But I entertain any questions on it.
Any questions, comments?
Councilmembers, I need to make a, just a note. The, I, I think that there was a mistake in terms of what went into the, uh, the packet, and we certainly apologize for any, um, stake, but, uh, Mr. Messer's, uh, agenda item review sheet is reflective of what was originally drafted, the, um, uh, and what I think he prepared some time ago and may have put a different, may have gotten a different copy sent in there. The Spring Hill, um, Recreation Commission, um, requested that we simply charge them fifteen dollars an hour for all use. Um, and I changed the contract and amended that, um, consistent with the request of the Recreation Commission. From the perspective of the city, that means that the city is actually gaining more money um, than what is described here or, or what was done in the past. Um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
What's the difference between what it was to what it is now?
The difference between what it was and what it is now is that they're paying fifteen dollars an hour rather than an estimated use. We're not going back and doing an audit, but we are having to add up all the hours. The additional distinction is that it used to be that for the required ten free hours, part of the contract requires, and the reason that we give the Spring Hill Recreation Commission, um, uh, such a, a good rate or a, a slightly better rate than we provide others or a better rate, is that they are required under the contract to provide ten free hours a week of programming to, um, city residents. And that, at what, and under the, our previous contract draft, we ate half the cost of the fifteen dollars an hour. They decided for simplicity use that they just wanted it to be fifteen dollars an hour for all things, so instead of us for more than half the, and that actually included more than half of the hourly use, we're getting an extra fif- we're getting an extra seven dollars and fifty cents an hour. The contract is correct, the contract that you are approving is correct, it's just that the, the agenda review sheet.
Responding agenda notes are wrong.
That's correct, the contract is correct and up to date with the, um, with the requested changes.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the facility use agreement with the Spring Hill Rec Commission.
Second?
We've got a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, one, zero. Three zero one. Three zero one, right, yep.
Somebody wanna get Mr. Peel?
And then if somebody wouldn't mind getting Mr. Peel? Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to announcements and reports. Um, I don't have any, any announcements, um, Mrs. Roth?
Uh, went to the ribbon, or excuse me, the groundbreaking for Moody's Hardware, so that was really exciting and it was just really cool to hear that story of how they came about, uh, just John Q. Public citizens saw a need and they said, let's do it, and so it was, it was really neat, so that's just a true, it's a cool story, like that's Spring Hill, what I think of as like entrepreneurs and just filling a need and seeing a need and, and doing it, so I thought that was really cool, so.
That was cool.
Very excited to, to get that up and going, um. I'm sure Brian's gonna talk about it, excuse me, Councilmember Peel's gonna talk about it, but, uh, I think he touched on it last meeting, firework, uh, sale coming up, obviously, please everybody be careful and safe, but enjoy and obviously support those fireworks scenes. Other than that, and I didn't say anything about it, but, uh, the last meeting, but the, um, Memorial Day celebration at the, uh, cemetery, um, last month was really, really cool. I, uh, had never been and, and Mayor Birkey asked me to attend and, um, I brought, I was lucky enough to bring my daughter and it was a really cool event and, uh, just really neat to especially have my daughter with me to feel the energy and, and be with those, those people who were paying their respects and it was a really neat event, so hopefully that continues for, uh, many, many years.
Yeah, I was really bummed I was missing out on that, I had a family event that was.
I'm, I'm glad you asked, it was, it was really cool. And again, just being able to take one of my daughters was, was a lot of fun for me, so, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Van Houten?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Peel?
Uh, I got a handful of things, um, Pat, I was hoping, or Mr. Burton, I was hoping that you, you likely will have a report on some of these things or hopefully could shed some light on them, but, um, additional information on the water loss reporting, um, uh, going through old notes from previous meetings. Um, also, uh, we had talked about the potential for a discussion about the uh, appointment process or issues with the election, uh, kinda see where we were at with that. And then hot topic that's hit this week or the last couple of weeks, always a hot topic, but, um, particularly in the last couple of days, the, so road improvements and what's going on with victory and South Webster, just kind of an update with that. Um, and then the only other thing I had was, uh, I did talk to a Clearwave representative, cause I got a couple of emails and Mr. Peterman spoke about the, some of the boxes, uh, last time. Um, and so they, they gave me a really good detailed update, so, um, and I went back and looked. The purchase of RG was announced towards the end of March, um, so they've, they've owned it for about three months. In three months, they have buried a hundred and ninety-nine lines as of yesterday, they still have a hundred and seventy-four to go. And they are, have an anticipated completion date of no later than August first for that. Um, and accomplishing all that, you know, accomplishing half of it in the first three, three months, I think is pretty significant. They've been doing work on North and South Franklin, North and South Webster, uh, West South Street, North Washington, North and South Jefferson, Skyview Lane, two hundred and ninth Terrace. Uh, currently teams working on South Barker, West two hundred and eighth and West two hundred and ninth. Buried locates have been called in and will go active in the next couple of days for Balsam, West two hundred tenth Street, South Madison and Crestview Street. While I was out and saw Mr. Peterman last night, I also went through Woodland Ridge and this was probably six thirty, between six thirty and seven thirty last night, I saw three different s- subcontractors that were burying line still out working past six thirty in the evening, so there's no doubt in my mind that significant work is getting done by Clearwave to get things done. Coincidentally, they also hit a gas line right by, um, right by Gambino's and the liquor store last night also. Um, but they were working, you know, that was near six o'clock-ish last night as well, so, I think we're seeing really good things from Clearwave and I think those are really positive signs. I hope that gives our current, past RG customers some comfort in that the issues that they had with RG are being addressed by the new owner, they're being addressed rapidly and they're being addressed well. They have good plans and they gave me other information that I don't wanna overpromise, so it, but I feel good. so it, but I feel good about what they're doing and I think people who don't have access to their service will have access to it soon. So for as long as we've been dealing with internet issues, this is by far the best solution that we have ever seen. And I think that is phenomenal for our entire community.
And to tag on what Brian said, that was one of the things, like, you know, I promised, you know, when I came on was to really press them to bury those lines and to get that moving because it's been an ongoing eyesore and kids tripping over on the sidewalk and everything. And I had talked to them within a few days of them taking over and they had promised to get started on it right away and slam on it and they've so far followed up with their word and followed up with action. So we appreciate that for sure as citizens when they're, when they're following up with their word to do what they say they're going to do because we get promised a lot of things and it's nice to see somebody actually doing it. Mr. Burton? Yeah, I didn't know, yeah, okay. He wanted, yeah, sure. Mrs. North?
I don't think there's anything else.
All right. Mr. Burton?
Okay. I just thought if, if there was something, I could just-
Add on to it, yep. And I was going to have Mr. Burton, sorry to interrupt, I was going to have Mr. Burton talk about internet, so you kind of tackled a lot of it, so go for it.
That's perfect. To start out, Luanne did contact us and it's about three hundred and seventy thousand for our portion of One Hundred and Ninety-Ninth. So I wanted to make sure that, that, and thank you, Luanne.
And that was part of a previous-
Oh, yes. No.
It was, it's been on the budget for a long time. It's not something new.
That's correct. I wanted to make sure that everyone knew.
When you're talking about that three hundred and seventy-four thousand, is it the intermodal truck route that you're talking about that we have a portion to pay of it?
It's One Hundred and Ninety-Ninth from One Sixty-Nine to Veterans Lane.
Okay. Well, that's on the other side of the highway.
Yeah. So essentially it'll, it'll widen it up and give shoulders on there and-
Yes.
Make it a lot safer for families. Like if you're riding a bike or something, traveling from Spring Hill to get to Veterans Park.
That's correct.
And, and obviously the cars and everything else, but-
Yes.
But it'll, it'll make it a lot, a lot safer road.
And, and it looks, to give you another quick, you know, it, turning into veterans there, though, I believe there's Turn Lane in there and things like that to help make it a little safer. So, so we'll start out, Clearwave, a little over fifty percent or right at the fifty percent mark, plus or minus. And also, you know, a lot of times we forget how much rain we received because it hasn't rained for a few days. And so I think they've done really well in that perspective and, and timing. They're in constant communications with staff on right-of-way permitting and everything, as well as looking at expanding and really getting expanded into all areas of this community.
And all of this, wow, when they took, they kind of didn't really know what all they had. So they've gotten all this accomplished all the while trying to figure out what, you know, what kind of mess they had that they had.
Exactly. What's in the ground, what, you know? So, and in conjunction with that, you know, looking at the, it stopped. I don't know, something stopped, it told me. So anyway, in conjunction with that, and also serving businesses, they're looking to get the, to the downtown area. So we're working with them in connecting, you know, the police department's in dire need of, of fiber and connecting with other areas in that downtown area. So they're really working diligently to get all the areas as quickly as they can. So I think they're doing a really good job on that.
You mentioned rain, but also the heat.
Right now, it's heat.
To get, like, do all that work and to dig those holes and bury that, they're sweating their faces off, so.
Yes, they are.
Tell them thank you if you see them.
Well, and we do all the time.
I'm talking to everybody, just if you see them out there working, tell them thank-
Definitely. And what's really good also is, I mean, they really do call a lot. The lady that's in charge of our district is actually from Wellsville, so she knows the area. Her family still lives there. So she, she has an interest in the whole area, so. Victory, Webster, as I don't know if I've seen, but Public Works has been working on Two Hundred and Twenty-Third diligently. We do have a contract with Vance Brothers to do some chip and seal this year. They're going to just work us in. And in conjunction with that, tomorrow and then next week, there's going to be work that's going to start on Victory, where they'll be replacing some areas and getting prepared to chip and seal Victory as well. And that will be using a granite instead of just a limestone that creates all kinds of dust and all. So we're fortunate to be able to get a few days out of them because usually you have to be on schedule a year ahead. So I believe we're working to get a contract to you, but we went ahead and, and it's on their list to, to do. So we should see some improvements in that entire area shortly. We already see some with the crack sealing that's going on and all. And the state did do some patchwork out there also, which was good to help us there on that. Water loss. So i- if you recall that we were about a twenty-five, twenty-seven percent water loss, which in reality numbers was a hundred thousand dollars a year loss. The staff has worked, and they really have worked hard on figuring out, you know, where this is at, where, bottom line, a lot of it was incorrect billing, where a multiplier should have been a ten or a hundredth or something times that, you know, so by a tenth or a hundredth. And it was just a straight read where, you know, they wouldn't have the correct bill in there. So they've corrected a lot of that. We're still, for the first five months of this year, we're at a twelve point four, if I remember, twelve percent anyway, still.
Down from twenty-seven, you said?
Down from twenty-four to twenty-seven average, you know? So we've, we've really made big strides on it. One of the things that we're looking at is actually, last month it was a negative one point seven, but the month before it was a twenty-four, twenty-two or twenty-four percent loss. So we have some fluctuation there and we're trying to get that in con, in conjunction with when they read the meter, we want to have our stuff all the same timing. I'm sure that, my guess is going to be that ten percent of that is because of the timing of the reading. Not saying that we have everything corrected yet, but we're working on it. We have a lot of old meters out there on residential properties. We just can't afford to just go in and replace them all, especially right now. But we're willing on it, we're watching it very closely and, you know, we, we're going to have this long-term contract here before too long with two. So I really hope that by the end of this year, we can have this down in the single digits and then we'll just keep working at it. Obviously, you know, I'd like to have a change tomorrow. I want every drop of water accounted for because it's money. I mean, especially, you know, we don't produce water any longer, so we have to buy every drop that comes through there. So it's really important as a financial tool to make sure that we do it correctly. So I believe that's really all I had. There's, yeah, apparently, my mic's up. No, I think that's all I really had. I appreciate it. And if you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Dunley?
No reporter.
Chief Henson?
No report.
Madam Clerk?
No report.
Mr. Messer?
Uh, no report.
Scared everybody away.
All right. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session and it looks like the first one we need thirty minutes on.
Okay, so that puts us at forty. I move the City Council recess into executive session for thirty minutes to receive advice of council regarding contract negotiations pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception of KFC seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at nine forty. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons in attendance are the following. F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney, Patrick Burton, interim City Administrator, Tyler Ellsworth, Kootok Rock, Lynn Armstrong, Finance Director, and Ashley Wood, Executive Assistant Deputy Clerk, City Clerk, excuse me.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero, zero. Motion carries four zero zero.
...
All right, let the record reflect, the governing body reconvened into open meeting at 9:40 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. We'll now entertain a motion to move into executive session number two. And we need 20 minutes on this one.
Okay, so that would be... okay. I move the City Council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to receive advice of regarding litigation, administrative investigation and potential litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception of KSA 75-4319B2 of Kansas Open Meeting Act. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at 10:02. No vo... mm... no formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney, and Petra Burton, interim city administrator.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, zero.
Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened into open meeting at 10:01 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. And right now, I would entertain a motion to extend that executive session. And they said we need 15 more minutes.
I move to extend the exec- executive session for 15 minutes. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 10:17?
Yep.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero zero. See. All right. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened into open meeting at 10:17 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The decision was limited to the subject stated. We will now entertain a motion to go into executive session number three, and we need 10 minutes for that one.
Ten, okay. I move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to receive advice of regarding litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception of KSA 7543-19B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 10:28. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance, Charles F. Denley, City Attorney, Patrick Burton, interim city administrator.
Second.
We got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero zero. All right. Welcome back, guys. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in an open meeting at 10:28 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated.